Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Common Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Drill call, Shannon.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present except Alderperson Savage, who is absent and excused.
Thank you very much. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda that the Common Council minutes of July 11th.
Move for approval.
President Rosniak, seconded by Alderperson Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Rosniak, seconded by Alderperson Turchi, approving the Common Council minutes of July 11th, 2023.
Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communications, Shannon?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, we go to the next item, which is appearances, citizens' comments. Anybody from the city wishing to come up and address the Common Council is welcome to do so. You get three glorious minutes. Just state your name and your business or city address.
Mark McCune, 2466 Low Lane, Town of Erin. I'm here for item number nine. And I'll leave it at that. If anybody has questions during that period, you can freely ask me, okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Anton Oberjett, 626 Harrison Street. I'm here to discuss the terraces of the first phase of Harrison project, the rebuild of the road. I know it's not on the agenda, I guess, but-
No, that's fine.
I've been communicating with the city for several months since the beginning of March. The alderpersons and the mayor have been on that email all the time. Several of the staff members of the city have been on that. And we have been discussing topsoil, reseeding, and fixing that since March. I've got a cow pasture in the terrace, still. It's rye grass and weeds and rocks. That's all I have. The other half was planted in June in the middle of a drought, three, four weeks ago, and it's grass. It's literally grass. There's some weeds in there and totally get, you know, it's not going to be brand new. It wasn't gonna, it isn't gonna look like what I had before, but at least give me a good foundation to build a house on. What I've got right now is the middle of an interstate freeway. That's what I have. And I don't know that any of you have gone out there to look at it. I know that some of the staff members have. The feeling I get as a resident and a taxpayer is the city is siding with the contractor instead of with the taxpayers. The last communication I got was at the end of last week from John Griffin, who indicated that they were going to have city crews come out and fix this for us, or for me. I don't know what that means, because I have 20 residents, neighbors, that have the same terrace as I do. Are they gonna fix everybody's? We already paid Wandra to build it. Why are we gonna pay tax, more tax dollars to city crews to do the job a second time? I'd like to understand what the Common Council is going to do about this. Maybe you have to have some internal conversations. I don't know. But I've been in front of you guys since March, and now I'm standing here in front of you today.
This isn't a back and forth. This is a your statement.
Okay. Great. So, nothing's gonna happen?
No, not, nothing's gonna happen. This isn't the proper place to have that discussion. This isn't the hearing. It's your, it's your ability to speak to the Common Council directly.
Okay. And how do I get that ability to have the conversation further?
Again, this isn't the play. You could talk to the city attorney and he'd be happy to work you through, walk you through it.
Okay.
All righty.
Thanks.
You bet. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come up, state your name and address. You get three glorious minutes.
Yep. My name's Kelly Smith. I'm at 620 Troller Court. I'm here for the same reason. It's fine if you guys can't get back to us. I just hope that we hear something eventually. My concern is not only the appearance of the grass, but the fact that I have little kids and they are going to break their ankle. And who's gonna pay for that bill? Our, in between the sidewalk and the road is so lumpy, I have like the metal pipes sticking up. I can't even mow around it with what little weeds is there. Most of it's just dirt. I did call the city at one point. They suggested I email the aldermen's. So that was gonna be my next step until I found out I could just come here and kind of let you guys know what was going on. I did call Wandra. They didn't return my calls. I called again. They came and just, I think it was them that came. Somebody came and just threw a ton of seed all over. I mean, like, a whole bag of seed. It was a ridiculous amount. So I called back and I said, I really hope that's not like your way of fixing this problem. It needs to be completely redone. Like Anton said, on the other side of Harrison, the grass came in beautifully. I mean, it's green, it's growing. We've had no water. Ours is terrible. And, I mean, I guess I take pride in the appearance of how the outside of my house looks. I want it to look nice. I understand that they did this in November, so they planted it and then it snowed and then they dumped all the snow. So it kinda got lumpy. No one's at fault for that. We just wanna know when it's gonna be fixed. We don't wanna keep hearing eventually, eventually. I don't have the financial means to have a company come and fix it. So if you guys aren't gonna fix it, just let me know so I can get a shovel and try to do it myself, because something has to get done. I just don't wanna put the time and effort into it if it's something that the city's willing to help us correct and fix, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak, address the council. Last call. If not, we go to the mayor's report. I'm a little gripe, but it's a, it's a little different thing. It was an interesting trip that I took up to Fond du Lac just a couple of days ago. And as I got off and got gas at Highway 41 and County Road VB, there's a, happened to be a QuickTrip. And of course, that's right on the interstate, so you would think the gas would be a little more. It's $3.18 a gallon. $0.31 a gallon more than Hartford. Every station in Hartford. So it's just a concern of mine that, you know, the, I'll use a very strong word, the cabal that gets together and sets that price and there's no competition, but I go into Fond du Lac and there's a bunch of different prices. And I'm concerned about the fact that we seem to pay equal to the highest price. There are other communities around us that have a little less, but I haven't found any better or more. And I'm just wondering why and would love to know why, because I, hey, I buy my onions and bananas here and I do try and go to different stations. I really do, if the gas is competitive. But we're not talking about something G-bi in Hartford. We're talking about an absolute commodity, gasoline. And a lot of people are driving outside of Hartford, and if they do drive anywhere outside of Hartford, they're going to run into cheaper prices. And I would like to see the City of Hartford, especially considering, I don't mean to pick on QuickTrip, but I just happened to be the one I stopped that because it had the lower price at $3.18 right on the interstate, that they would look at the possibility of helping us out with giving us competitive pricing like other municipalities have. And we don't. We, I'm not saying you always gotta be the lost here, but it would be nice if you were maybe 10 or 12 cents, not $0.31 a gallon difference. And I do have the receipt to show if anybody questions it. And I did drive around and look at the $3.49 we have all over Hartford. So that would be nice. Just a consumer plead for those of us who not only have to pay taxes in the City of Hartford, but wanna fill up our gas and would just as soon be able to do it locally and have a competitive price, so tossing that out there. With that, aldermanic request, President Rosniak.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Alderperson Carroll.
Nothing, I mean.
Alderperson Reagan.
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderperson Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderperson Webb.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I do walk on Harrison and have been over there. And I have seen what you're talking about, so I'm hopeful that that can get fixed. I just wanted to say that.
Alderperson Kohler.
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Phillip.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. My expectation is that they'll address it to your satisfaction, so.
Thank you. And with that, we have a public hearing, which is a petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent, submitted by Leaping Farmland LLC for approximately 1.566 acres located south of Firefly Lane and north of Oriole Pond Apartments. I'd like to open the hearing and ask for a reading of the notice.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on July 25th, 2023, in the Common Council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following. A petition to annex property to the City of Hartford. The petitioned area consists of a portion of tax key number T6082300Z and is described as follows. Tax key T6082300Z. Said lands contain 68,196 square feet, 1.566 acres. Rezoning the petitioned area to RD2, two-family residential district will be heard, as well as an amendment of the official map. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the requested annexation, rezoning, and official map revision. A map and legal description of the parcel can be viewed at the Department of Planning and Zoning by appointment, 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM. It was published in the Daily News on July 7th, 2023, and July 14th, 2023, and 17 notices were sent.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the explanation of hearing by staff.
Good evening. So as stated previously by Shannon, it's a petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent by Leaping Farmland LLC for approximately 1.566 acres located south of Firefly Lane and north of Oriole Pond Apartments. The petition coincides with the, is contiguous to the City of Hartford, so it abuts the city itself. It is open to sewer water and electrical services in that area. The parent parcel, the 20-acre parent parcel was valued at $7,400 in 2023. The petitioned parcel, which is the 1.566 parcel, would thus be assessed at a value of $552.35. The expected valuation, if the properties are developed as proposed, would be approximately $1,800,000 or $225,000 per dwelling unit, which would generate an annual city property tax of approximately $8,496 or $1,050.12 per dwelling unit. As per state law, the city would require to pay the Town of Hartford taxes on the property for five years, which would be approximately $0.72 per year. The proposed development would allow for the creation of four apartment complex or condo complexes, a total of eight dwelling units. The impact on the school district would be an additional six to nine students, which should not be an issue. Would have minimal impact on police and emergency services and does comply with the Smart Growth Plan as it's going to be rezoned to RD2. From a staff perspective, this, this development creates a perfect buffer between the Oriole Pond Apartments and the subdivision, single-family subdivision to the north. So that is why we are in favor of this annexation and the proposed development.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will allow appearances. Appearances for. Anybody wishing to speak for the petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent for this property is welcome to come up. Just state your name, your address, your business, and there you go.
Mark McCune again, 2466 Low Lane. So it's Leaping Farmland. And for everybody locally, it was named after Ned Leaping and Carolyn, so I just wanna correct the name. It's a real nice family. It's been here forever. And that was their farmland that I purchased when I purchased the land both to the north and the south for the Red Oak Country Estates. This was planned back in 2005. In 2006, the engineering was done. Engineer Bill Rip. Everybody's gone. I think I'm the only one standing right now. But Rip was there, helped me with the design, the engineer from Wellchanson, who sold out, did the original plan. I am working with the original people that did the design work, though, with SEH. They just were purchased twice. But the planner, and I just met Justin, but this has been in a long-term plan, along with the other 200 acres I own there. So for everybody that hasn't been out there, I own everything down to E. I own everything east to the river. And I own on the other side of the subdivision to the north. So this is one small step with four little lots for side-by-side condos as a buffer. You'll probably see me again in the next nine months for another piece farther south of the apartments. And when we did this Red Oak Country Estates development, we put the sewer, water, cable, gas, electric, everything in. These lots were actually planned and the laterals are actually there. So everything is, everything's there. The sidewalk's even there for two of them. So there's nothing that needs to be done other than the split and then a little bit of sidewalk on the end, so. Anyways, it's been planned out this way, and then you'll probably see me back again for another phase further to the south. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak for the petition for direct annexation? Anybody else for? Last call. If not, we go appearances against. Anybody wishing to appear against for this direct annexation? Anybody wishing to speak against? You come up to the podium. Last call. Anybody against? Hearing none. Discussion by council. Anyone wishing to bring it up? This is pretty black and white. Go ahead. Alderperson Phillip.
Are these owner-occupied or rentals?
Mark, I'm gonna let you grab that one if you would, please.
So, under the federal housing law, you can't distinguish between the two, if that's what you're asking. They're gonna be condos. The likelihood of them being sold, if you're listening, it's very likely that they're gonna be owner-occupied, but you cannot distinguish, you can't force it that way. They're condo units. They're side-by-side.
I'm not asking to force. I'm just asking what your intent was.
The intent will be, there's one builder that's gonna buy all four lots, who's built in my subdivision. I've looked at two plans. They're gonna be very nice condo units. For everybody that's been in subdivision, he's building on lot seven on the way in right now. They'll be side-by-sides. My guess is they will be all sold. Yep, that's the intent.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd like to close the hearing and ask for action on ordinance number 1470, an ordinance annexing territory to the City of Hartford, Wisconsin. This, we have Joe and Joel, Kohler and Phillip. Are we-
Is this to suspend the rules?
This is to suspend the rules. Correct. Being an ordinance, correct. Yep.
Motion by Alderperson Kohler, seconded by Alderperson Phillip, to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1470.
For suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. For action, item two, Kohler, Phillip.
Motion by Alderperson Kohler, seconded by Alderperson Phillip, for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1470.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 10, Standing Committee Reports, Finance Personnel, Chairman Rosniak.
We have three items tonight. Number one, discussion and consideration of denying the sewer backup from Acuity Insurance on behalf of Gus Zignago. Dan Dantes is with us tonight. Dan, you wanna explain this one?
Yeah, so we're cleaning the sewer, the city's sewer, in front of the property. And the nozzle that we use for cleaning creates high pressure behind the nozzle and low pressure in front of it. So as we're going back and forth, up and down the street, we're crossing over laterals, where the laterals connect to the main. And that can sometimes blow pressurized water or air back up into the lateral. And then it'll, any water that's in their traps will shoot up either into their basement or their kitchen or bathrooms. Sometimes it can hit the ceiling.
Right.
So that's the case. We were cleaning roots on this. We're going back and forth in a, in a section of pipe. And they're claiming that it was the city's fault for blowing water up their lateral. Which, it can happen. Sometimes the venting on the home can be an issue. We get maybe one or two calls a year that people say, they know, we blew water up their toilet. There's no rhyme or reason for it. We can do the same street 10 times and it might happen to one house. It might not happen at all.
For the new alderperson who is present tonight, again, this is a situation in which the complaint and/or claim is filed with our insurance company. The insurance company then provides proof that, again, all the normal procedures by industry standards are being carried. And as long as, again, we're continuing to do routine maintenance to our sewer mains and doing everything we can to negate a problem of this nature, again, their recommendation to back to the city is to deny the claim. With that, that opens up the opportunity for then the individual then to actually take a legal action against the city. It's just the fact that the claim has to be cleared first.
Our Finance and Personnel Committee met two weeks ago, discussed this, and we went along with CivMCC recommending denial. So, any questions or comments? Not? Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And of course, CivMCC is our insurance carrier of record.
Right.
So, would look for a motion to deny the sewer backup claim as suggested by staff. Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Webb.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Webb, authorizing the denial of the sewer backup claim for Acuity Insurance on behalf of Gus Zignago.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you, Chairman Rosniak.
Item two, discussion and consideration of denying the sewer backup claim for the local collective. Dan?
So this is a different situation. The sewer's main, the city sewer main, got plugged up with grease and rags and caused the backup of this business. Once we were notified there was a backup, we came right away and cleared it. We helped clean the basement. One half of the basement has like rental locker storage units in it. We cleaned all of those out and assisted as much as we could in cleaning up. So I checked with a local restaurant nearby. They have records every three months their grease trap is cleaned. So we monitor this area typically and it's kind of a-
Keep in mind, this situation occurred before you guys got there.
Correct.
Right. Versus the other situation, so. Any questions or comments?
It's, it's just, one of the things I just wanna point out is the fact of, a lot of times, the sewer backups, especially main backups, a lot of times are around restaurants. It is, it's a major issue with grease and any other food products that they might put down the sewer. So it is, becomes unfortunately a normal situation, especially with restaurants who might be busy.
What did the Finance Personnel-
Finance Personnel recommended denial, went along with CivMCC, our city insurance group. So we recommended denial. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, would look for a motion to deny the sewer backup claim for the local collective. Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Carroll.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Carroll, authorizing the denial of the sewer backup claim for the local collective.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carried. Chairman Rosniak.
Item three, discussion and consideration authorizing the appropriate city officials to move forward with transitioning dispatch services to the Washington County Sheriff's Department and purchase ProFenix Records Management software for costs not to exceed $166,845. Chief McFarland is here, and Chief Stevens in the background.
Thank you. I've had an opportunity to speak with most of you, and as you recall, you have an executive summary in front of you, actually, that was the recommendation of which was approved by the Finance Personnel Committee on July 11th. And some of the key points to that are no staff in this particular move are going to lose their employment because of the city moving this service over. And that was a key for me. Taking care of our staff is very important. This is in no way a reflection of the job that they did. And I don't want anyone to think that, because they do an extremely good job every day, very professional. It has nothing to do with that. Some of the things that it does have to do with is the state of Wisconsin through legislation and grant funding is pushing agencies like ours towards consolidation of services, specifically public safety answering points, which are dispatch centers. Obviously, there'll be some realized cost savings in staffing in this area and equipment and different CIPs that you'll have an opportunity to look at and will have an opportunity to adjust based on this evening's meeting. But personally, I think this is a prudent decision, especially considering the timing. I really have an opportunity to do this now, considering the attrition of our staff and what we have in the future for CIP projects. I could sit on this and ask for more money and hire more people and pay for more equipment, but at the end of the day, this is not an if, this is a when. And I would probably be asked down the road, why did you do this, knowing the direction that this particular industry is going. We are a bit of an island here in Washington County. Everybody around us has or is consolidating already, so this isn't new. However, I'm not going along to get along. This is something that I've watched for the last five-plus years and of course, had this area of responsibility for 13 years. So I'm very versed in this area of dispatch, all the equipment and all the staffing. And so I put a lot of thought and consideration into this particular move. I had some discussions with the city administrator, the sheriff's office, and how, what it would look like moving forward. Obviously, there's a tremendous amount of moving parts in something like this, and we do not have it all figured out. I've had, been asked the question, is service going to suffer as a result? It may in the beginning. It'll certainly be different. But it's my job and Chief Stevens and the sheriff's job to make sure that it picks up right away and we have a good level of service for the City of Hartford residents to enjoy. There are many things that won't change as far as this goes, because the sheriff's department does answer a lot of our 911 calls already as it relates to the wireless side of things, and that will not change. So there are obvious benefits to the police department through new software that we could take advantage of. That software is currently in the CIP in 2027 for a cost of approximately $318,000 currently. We would be able to eliminate that out of CIP and pay for it this year with funds that we would have re-appropriated for the 911 project that we're doing this year. So again, the timing is key on a lot of different fronts. It's a good time for us to get out of this side of the business. We are gonna keep the staff, most of them that are left. The others will be retiring for the clerking that still has to be done in that area. So we still get to enjoy their company, which I very much do. So they're, they're very, very good at what they do and they're professionals, so. Chief Stevens is here as well, if you have questions for either one of us.
Paul, comments?
I'd just like to speak on the operational efficiencies and how it impacts fire and EMS. As Chief McFarland stated, the cellular 911 calls all go to Washington County now, even the ones that originate from the City of Hartford. And I think that percentage of 911 calls that are cellular is just going to continue to increase, probably to the point where 100% of them are gonna go to the county and be cellular. So once the county answers that cellular 911, they have to transfer that call to the City of Hartford dispatchers currently. And they're the ones who page us out. You know, in the future, we'll be able to skip that step. When the cellular 911 call comes into the county, they have the ability to page us and it eliminates that transferring of the phone call. Currently, when we go anywhere outside the City of Hartford, we have to notify City of Hartford dispatch, fire dispatch, that we are en route and responding. And then we have to immediately switch to a different talk group channel on the, on the mobile radios and repeat the same message to the county and let them know that we're responding on scene and anything else that we might need. So that duplication of radio traffic is inefficient, and we'll be able to eliminate that. Currently, all of the major incidents that mutual aid is called upon or requested of goes through the county dispatch. Our Mavis Division is Division 111. And each Mavis Division, county division- Our Mavis Division is Division 111, and each Mavis Division, county division, has one central dispatch designated for all the Mavis calls, mutual aid box alarm system calls. So as soon as we have a significant incident and we go for mutual aid, call for mutual aid, the entire incident is switched over and communication is done solely with the Washington County Dispatch Center, Division 111. One other thing that I think has been discussed through the years is having a dedicated fire and EMS dispatcher. And with the additional call volume and additional staffing that the county, it's going to require the county to add staff, there is some discussion of having a dedicated dispatcher for fire and EMS calls, which is also beneficial, because they're familiar with the processes. And then, lastly, I just wanna mention that I feel like Chief McFarland has done a good job looking for an opportunity that would have a very minimal impact on the human side of things, the people losing their jobs here, and he has chosen a time where it will have the least impact on, on the personal lives of the people that have worked for the city for a long time, and I credit Scott for identifying and doing that now. And the last comment, I guess, is when big things are happening, or multiple things are happening in the city of Hartford, and law enforcement is busy, fire is busy, there's a couple ambulances out, it's very difficult to have one dispatcher handle that call volume. And that'll be another benefit of having multiple dispatchers on duty 24/7 at the county level. And then I'd just answer any other questions that you would have on operational efficiencies for us.
All right, any questions or comments for our chiefs? Pretty serious business here, but it was inevitable. We knew we'd get to this point, so. Our Finance and Personnel Committee spent a lot of time talking with these guys, and this is the way to go. And actually, it's cost-saving, Scott. It is cost-saving in the long run.
It is in some areas, it is in some areas, for sure.
Right.
Several areas.
It's not why we're doing it, but...
Correct.
Right.
Part of the recommendation here also talks about a ProPhoenix Records Management software. The current records, records management software we use is 20 years old, and it's woefully inadequate, and it doesn't keep up with some of the state-certified things that we need to do, and they don't seem real interested in getting there, no matter how hard we try. That's the reason that I had it in CIP in 2027. I wish I could've put it in sooner, but it's, it's a big bill. And so, in order for us to make this move with the sheriff's department, we also have to have this software, in order for us to communicate them with our officers, to communicate with the dispatch, and then, of course, the records management side of things. It offers many advantages to, over what we're doing currently, one of which is being able to share records with other agencies, which we just can't do. Everyone else in Washington County can, we cannot. Again, we're a bit of an island on that, but we had planned on that just a little bit further down the road, so. Just a little explanation, as far as that's concerned, is it's part of the recommendation as well.
I had a question thrown at me. You're keeping on three police support specialists. What will be the role of a police support specialist?
Sure. In this move, we have seven people total. Two of them are clerks. Currently, they type, do reports, get everything ready for the DA, all other reports as well. Five are dispatchers, one of which has already left to work at the sheriff's department. So that leaves us four. Those two clerks and one of those dispatchers are retiring. That leaves me three. Those three will be doing all of the clerking that the dispatchers did before, all of the clerking that the two clerks that left were also doing in typing up reports and getting those prepared for the DA. They'll be doing all of our accreditation. They'll be doing records requests. So we'll be shifting some of the responsibility off of other people who need to do other things to those clerks, because they'll have that additional time to do it. So they'll have a full plate of things to do. The job description's already been rewritten.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Only thing I want to say is, I mean, I appreciate you taking time. I know you took time with each, each and every one of us separately. I also did talk, obviously, to a couple of the dispatchers, and, you know, it was, it is something that's in favor with them as well. I mean, so it's not, it was handled very eloquently, brought to them first, brought to, you know, they understood what was going on, they explained all the different ways and assured the best of their ability that they would, you know, maintain their jobs. The only thing that really kind of came negative out of it in some of my conversations, and it wasn't with the chief, it was actually with a couple of the dispatchers, is not every county has, and this is nothing that we can do and nothing we can really control, but not every county has rolled out this program very well. Some counties are really struggling, some of them aren't. What I, so they're concerned, their concern was, you know, what happens if they don't? Right now, they're very comfortable with the direction that, that the Washington County chief is taking it, and the, the, I guess, the focus he's putting on it in building up the correct way. So as I said, or as he said there, it's, it seems to be a win-win for all of us, not only financially, but also with staffing helps out in other areas, and as long as both chiefs are in favor of it, I have no objection.
Okay. Anyone else? No? If not, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. Again, the work that was done by Chief McFarland and Chief Stevens has been yeoman's work. Both of you know that I have been a proponent of looking at the possibility of consolidated dispatch. I started over a dozen years ago in trying to see if we could move it forward and just have conversations. My concern was, as was yours, and that is that I wanted to make sure that we made sure that our folks ended up with a job or there, or, or that we would have something here. I love the fact that you had brought up, we go seven, but it's concentrating now to, it looks like, three, because of, and we're doing it through attrition, which is what I think is a very healthy way to do it. That, that to me is very important, and when somebody puts in a long period of time, I mean, you just don't show them the door, because there is work to do. We are a growing city, and it's important to make sure that we have all of our things, all of our ducks in a row. You absolutely are correct in the fact that with what's going on with the state, I mean, I forget, what does PSAP stand for? Help me out.
Public Safety Answering Point.
Thank you. Public Safety Answering Point. There are 72 counties, and they want to go to 72 PSAPs. That's the goal. We have 151 is my, I mean, Washington County has four, and that is Hartford, West Bend, Germantown, and the county. So the first one in of the big three that aren't, obviously, had the best chance, I think, of making sure that our people were taken care of, so I'm glad that the forward thinking and, and your statement that this was the right time to do it financially, to do it the best way for the people, makes absolutely great sense. And addressing, I think, the concerns that Joe Kohler heard when he talked to some of the dispatchers. The neat thing about Washington County is, is because this is not something that we're just leaping into. Okay, everybody's doing it. I mean, when you realize that the communities of Slinger, Kiwascom, Jackson have already consolidated, so we've already gone through that system with other communities, and so Washington County is no stranger in being able to pick that up, and I think that with the incredible quality of leadership that we have here and the awesome amount of experience, because I've told you both you can't leave until at least the day after I do, so, it's important for the city to understand, like you had mentioned, and that is that there's going to be change, but you're not going to see any type of demonstrable drop in service, because we still have incredible people in Washington County, and one of our own is already there. So I can really see that as helping that transition portion to go into the Washington County Dispatch. And I remember, it was about a dozen years ago when I raised this, and I said almost 70% of the calls that were coming at the time were coming this, now it's well over 80%. Every time you get a 911 call from the city of Hartford, you've got a better than 80% chance that it's coming off of a cellphone. And that then goes to the county and has to become back, you know, come back to us, which, as Chief Stevens mentioned, is not convenient. It doesn't bark well for having the, the type of service that we're looking for, and that problem will be eliminated. So I would hope that this would be a unanimous vote. It is truly, I believe, in the interest of the city of Hartford and, and Washington County, and the safety, and we get a financial plus, too, which is always great. So, thank you very much for that. And does anybody else wish to opine? That was my little blurb there. If not, I would look for a motion authorizing appropriate city officials to move toward a transitioning dispatch service to the Washington County.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion.
My commission, we've got by Webb, and seconded by Reagan.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Reagan, authorizing the appropriate city officials to move forward with transitioning dispatch services to the Washington County Sheriff's Department and purchase ProPhoenix Records Management software for a cost not to exceed $166,845.
And it is interesting that that's only about half of what you were going to need in 2027 with that dollar amount, so there's a big part of savings right there.
There was, there's also grants, as was mentioned, in the executive summary of which we applied for one.
Yes.
For about half the amount of that, so...
It's a beautiful thing, isn't it?
Crossing half the years.
Super. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. We go now, we pass public works utility ordinances, and Steve, did you have anything for the city administrator? I'm gonna say...
Nope.
Okay, with that, we go into closed session. The common council to move into closed session under Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding discussion on current housing needs and the proposed solutions. The common council to reconvene in open session for adjournment only. We will have a roll call vote. Shannon? Do we have a motion to do that? Well, we can have a motion if you want to. You didn't make a motion. Are you making a motion now?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
About time, okay. And Alder Person Phillip?
Motion by Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Kohler, to go into closed session.
No, Phillip.
Phillip?
Yep, it's one of the Joes.
Motion by Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Phillip, to go into closed session at 7:42 PM.
Roll call?
Yep. Webb?
Aye.
Rosniak?
Aye.
Savage? No. Phillip?
Aye.
Turchi?
Aye.
Kohler?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Reagan?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
Thank you very much, we're in closed session.